Today is Monday, December 8th, 2025. It's 2:30 PM. We're here to review the Highway Construction Priority Program for fiscal year 2026 and 2027 in DOT District 862, which is Livingston, St. Helena, St. John of Baptist, St. Tammany, Tangipahoe, and Washington Parishes. My name is Pat Conick. I'm the chairman of the Senate Transportation Committee. I represent District 8, which includes Jefferson and Plaquemine Parish on the West Bank. At this time, I want to introduce the members who are here, starting from my left to the right. Please introduce yourself, members. Ladies first. Let's start on that end.
State Representative Sylvia Taylor, District 57, St. Charles, St. John Parish. Representatives Pat Moore, District 17, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, West Monroe, Town of Reachwood, and outside of municipal parish.
Hi, good afternoon. I am Senator Valerie Hodges, and I represent District 13, which is most of Livingston Parish.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Wiley. I represent District 81, which is parts of Ascension, St. James, and a big old part of Livingston Parish.
Good afternoon. Representative Roger Wilder III, District 71 State Representative, representing Denham Springs Walker, and a little bit north and south of the interstate between.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. I am State Rep. Kelly Hennessy Dickerson. I represent District 64, which of course is Livingston Parish and East Baton Rouge. It's Watson, Denham, Walker, and EBR. Thank y'all for being here today.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Abraham. I'm a state senator from Calcasieu, Jeff Davis Parish, and Cameron Parish in southwest Louisiana.
Good afternoon. I'm Beth Meisel, State Senator for District 12, all of Washington, heart of Tangipahoe and St. Tammany.
I'm Kim Carver, Representative for House District 89, wholly contained in Western St. Tammany Parish, Mandeville, and Madisonville communities.
Brian Glorioso, State Representative, District 90 in Slidell.
Thank you, members. At this time, I was supposed to announce the public officials that are here in the audience. I don't have that sheet yet, so I'll get to that later. If I can get that for me. As mentioned earlier, we are here to review the proposed highway construction projects for fiscal year 2026 and 2027 from the Department of Transportation and Development, as well as to allow the public the opportunity to provide their own testimony as it relates to highway construction needs in the area. We will start with a presentation from DOTD Secretary Mr. Glenn Ladette. He will provide a general update on transportation progress within the department, and then we'll get into some specific district initiatives here in District 62. I'll turn it over to the secretary. Good to see you again.
Hold on, let me. Can you hear me now? Is that on? Yep, thank you. Yeah, appreciate you, Chairman Conick, and members of the committee. Excited to be here in District 62 in Livingston Parish. Excited to give you the FY 2627 Highway Party Program overview presentation, and obviously hear feedback both from yourselves as well as the public. And so I know this is critical to getting that feedback to where we can look to obviously continue to do the efforts that we do at the department to prioritize the good work across the state, but also understand what's needed in the future. So with that, we've got really good updates for you today. I think, you know, we really want to give you just an overview to kickstart this process of what's going on at the department, the transformation that is underway, touch on really the good things that are happening across DOTD, as well as touch on work that's ongoing at the district before we jump into the presentation. And so with that, I'll just kind of kickstart that, if you don't mind, Chairman. And so we've got really great work going on across the state. As you know, with your leadership and the leadership of Governor Landry, we kicked off a transformation this year to really transform the department top to bottom, make sure that we streamline project delivery first and foremost. So all of the products we talk about today, we need to make sure we deliver those each and every year, deliver what's in this book that you see today every year to your constituents. And so that's first and foremost what we'll talk about today, is making sure that we are streamlining project delivery in this transformation. I think the era of having projects delayed a decade is over. And so whatever we need to do, we are doing at the department to make sure that's not the case. You could see pictures across the slide. Obviously, we got a lot of great work going on across the state. And so we want to update you on all of that, both just in our regular program, but also on the LTIF side. And so the Louisiana Transportation Infrastructure Fund, the dollars that y'all provided in cash, non-recurring monies through HB2 has really been important to our state, to the department, so that we can do the great work that we do for your constituents. And so I want to thank you first and foremost for that. I know that both Secretary Dofanay, as well as DA Dalton Williams, would touch on that. But that is critical to the work that we do. When you look at the investment that we've made across the state, it is really paramount to our success, is being able to have those funds to pair with our program dollars, so that not only the capital projects that we'll talk about today, but the ongoing operation and maintenance work that's critical to preserving our system is done each and every day. And so what you see on the screen is really a reflection of kind of numbers statewide. I know Dalton will touch on some of this as he gives his presentation. But it's really critical, this investment, not only on capital construction projects, but also really on operation and maintenance, has really been, what I would say, a success. And, you know, I think we have delivered on all of those projects with the LTIF. So we are either on schedule or ahead of schedule on all these projects. So it's really been great. But with that, obviously, again, I touched on project delivery. This is critical. So what I'd like to do is turn it over to our new Assistant Secretary of Project Delivery. He's been instrumental in helping to improve this process, Eric Dofanay. Welcome him up here to say a few words before we turn it over to the district administrator. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric Dofanay. Eric?
Welcome, Eric. Thank you, Secretary. Eric Dofanay, Assistant Secretary of Project Delivery for DOTD. I want to start by thanking everyone for attending. Excited to see such a great turnout. These public hearings are an instrumental part of our project prioritization and selection process. Feedback from legislators, local officials, and the public are key parts of the project selection process, along with other factors we use, such as existing conditions, average daily traffic, safety concerns, maintenance costs, economic development, et cetera. We do utilize this feedback we receive throughout the year to deliver projects, excuse me, to deliver projects that are important to the people we serve. While these are the official hearings, we also enjoy feedback throughout the year. I encourage anyone to reach out to the district administrator or myself with any questions, concerns, or input that would help us prioritize needs of people. As Secretary mentioned, last year, legislation created the Office of Transformation and Office of Project Delivery, both offices aimed at enhancing efficiency, effectiveness, and accountability within DOTD. Since then, we have launched new initiatives to modernize our internal processes. With respect to project delivery, we are evaluating and streamlining our entire process, including project prioritization, an updated project delivery framework, task and responsibility-oriented project management, a new project reporting system for transparency, and even contract administration and construction phase consistency. Essentially, our goal is to do three things: clearly define our project priorities; two, establish a five-year living, fiscally constrained highway priority program, along with ideas on how to fund and resource the projects; and number three, reform our project management and delivery process to provide for more accountability and consistency from project inception through construction. Another huge effort underway is the communication of our highway priority program, specifically more transparent communication. Communicating the priorities, the risks associated with project development, challenges, and opportunities will foster more trust and collaboration amongst all stakeholders needed to deliver critical infrastructure projects. Aside from the internal process enhancements we have going on, another key component in the formula, perhaps the largest component, is funding. DOTD has historically allocated all federal and state dollars in each fiscal year. In the past couple of years, additional dollars through the Louisiana Transportation Infrastructure Fund has helped advance the delivery of an additional 100 projects, totaling over $530 million in roadway preservation projects alone. There's 62 additional projects delivered on time in 2024, and another 37 projects that are on or ahead of schedule this year. In addition to the LTIF funding for capital projects, each district received $7.5 million last year and $7 million this year in operational maintenance funding through LTIF. This funding was spent on several typical maintenance operations, but also on in-house crews using some of this funding to purchase materials to help maintain and preserve our existing system, reducing assets we have in deteriorated conditions, which ultimately helps stretch the capital budget. The continuation of these efforts will truly help deliver and advance essential infrastructure improvements and address a growing backlog of needs. I want to thank you to the legislature for the trust and commitment with the LTIF funding, and also want to thank the district, district administrator, our design staff, our construction staff, and our maintenance units for taking the challenge and delivering all of these additional projects and additional funding. This combined effort between all of us is truly making a difference statewide. With that, I would like to introduce the district administrator for District 62, Mr. Dalton Williams, to discuss some projects and accomplishments in more detail.
Thank you, Eric. Chairman, members, thank you for having me here this morning. I'm excited to have you here today in Livingston Parish to discuss the projects that we have and the success that we've had over the last year. I want to thank y'all for the extra money that we got through this LTIF program for the last year. You know, with that money, that really helps us move things forward in the district. Our priorities get moved ahead. We've been able to move some projects up that we would otherwise not have had funding for, so we do say thank you for that. Also, with the extra money that y'all gave us last year, the $7 million, as Eric alluded to last year, we were able to really accomplish some great things. And I want to tell you, from me and from my staff, how much we appreciate that extra money and being given that ability to spend that and do what was needed for our districts. I think each and every one of you have been able to, in the district, have been able to see what we've been able to accomplish with that. So I'll give you a couple of examples on that. We've been able to overlay some more. I used a million dollars of that money last year for in-house overlays to my staff, to my crews to go out, be able to go out, the district crews to be able to go do that thing. We've been able to do additional striping that was much needed. We bought extra supplies for our in-house crews to do striping, that being paint and beads and items of that nature. Then we were also able to go out and contract some thermo work, that's work that we can't normally do out of the district, to improve our roundabout striping, our interstate striping on that. So I want to tell you thank you for that. We were also able to put up new fencing on the interstate. A lot of, we had a lot of problems with fencing being down. We were able to get that kind of thing done there. Replaced multiple crawl strains that were in desperate need of crawl strain replacement. Additionally, what we've done with some of the extra money that we received in this district is we added cycles on our interstate for some sweeping for our bridges, and we're adding extra litter and mowing cycles with some of that money as well. So I want to thank you for that. We'll continue to do those things with the district funding and ask that you continue to support that effort and fund that. Also with me today, I'd like to introduce my staff. I have most of them sitting back here, right here. So on the end right here, I have Mr. Derek Burner. He's the area engineer for Tangipahoe and Livingston Parish. Next, it's Lacy McCaskill. She's the area engineer for St. Tammany and Washington Parish. There we go. But, um... Ms. Christine Gowan. All of a sudden, I drew an absolute blank on that. Thank you, Ms. Christine. She's my traffic engineer, district traffic engineer. I have also with me Ms. Erica Ballard sitting beside her. That's my admin, administrative assistant. Most of you have dealt with her or talked with her or gotten an email. She's the one that keeps me straight where I need to be. Jennifer Brandon beside her, that is my area, I mean, my engineer, engineering ADA of engineering. And then Mr. Clay James, who's area engineer for St. John and Tangipahoe Parish. I was told there was a video here, so let's see if I can get smart enough to push that. We've got a highlight here of a project that we've been working on for several years. This is affectionately we call the Bush Highway here. There we go. Well, it didn't... LA 3241. So this is one of, this is the next-to-last time project. But yes, I don't know, I don't know what the videos are. But overall, this connects I-12 to Bush, as you can see here, 3241. We broke this project into three phases. So phase actually kind of got a little backwards, but Phase 2 and 3 are complete. Phase 1, the clearing and grooming has been completed on that project. We're now in the utility phase of moving the utilities. As soon as the utilities are moved and out of the way, and hopefully that's about 10 months from now, we plan on letting the final phase of that to connect that through and be finished with that project. So this will be, it's going to be a wonderful project for not only the area, but for the district and for DOTD in whole. So thank y'all for supporting that project and moving it forward.
And when's the completion date?
I'm sorry?
The completion date for that project?
I don't have a completion date on that, right off the top. Yeah, it's probably about three-year construction, and we'll let it in about a year or so. Yes, ma'am. We'll do all we can to get it done before you leave. How about that? No promises on that, though. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Dalton. And Chairman, the utilities are being relocated right now, so it's getting kicked off for construction.
Mr. Secretary, before you start, I want to announce the public officials, if you don't mind. In the audience is District Councilman Dean Coats, Livingston Parish Council, District 8; Parish President Mike Cooper for St. Tammany Parish; Jimmy Watson, Mayor of City of Walker, J.D. Taylor, Mayor of the Town of Livingston; Robbie Miller, Tangipahoe Parish President; and joining us also is Rep. Kim Coats. Are y'all related? All right. Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, you know, thank District Administrator Dalton Williams. Obviously, the stakeholders in this room and our partners here are critical to us. And so I know we've had a pleasure working with them in all the districts. So thank y'all for all your support. The reason we're here today is for the Highway Priority Program, the presentation. So really excited to jumpstart this. As you know, we want to give you an overview of the program, an overview of the selection process, and then touch on the actual investment in our state's infrastructure this year. And so with that, I'll jump right in, and then obviously Dalton and I can answer any questions about the Highway Party Program or specific projects to the best of our ability. So with that, I'll just jump right in. So as you know, each and every year, we really gather to go over the prioritized plan for transportation across our state. And really what we're looking at is that investment in roads and bridges across Louisiana, what's being led for construction, what's being developed, and what needs more funding, and making sure that we're getting that feedback both from y'all as well as the public each and every year. And so at the end of this, it's really all about ensuring that taxpayer dollars are being used and invested effectively across our state for transportation. And so this is an exciting time with a new horizon in the transformation. So as we jumpstart each and every year, we want to make sure that we touch on the goals and objectives of our highway transportation program. And so you could see they're really summarized well there. It's five items, and just want to touch on these. First and foremost, we're always trying to preserve and operate the system. So anything that we have to do to bring the highway system into a good state of repair so that we can effectively operate it and make sure that we are supporting a resilient system is what we do in Goal and Objective 1 and 2. Obviously, this includes incorporating any innovation with our new Office of Transformation. We're doing that each and every day, but also particularly in areas in the South with hurricanes, is making sure we're supporting evacuation routes for emergencies. So these two things are critical. Item 3, improving the safety of the system. Obviously, our main goal and objective every day is making sure that we improve safety for both motorized and non-motorized users. So anything that we can do to make sure we reduce crashes, reduce fatalities, is what we're doing at DOTD. Finally, of course, you know, we want to drive economic development. We want to make sure we are expanding the system, relieving congestion. And so you see Goal and Objective 4 is doing just that, making sure we can increase accessibility for people, goods, and services across our state is Goal and Objective 4. And then finally, this all feeds into improving the quality of life for our communities and for all of the public. And so you can see why these are our five goals and objectives for DOTD and for the Highway Priority Program. And so for these reasons, we break all of these projects down into different types, and you can see they really align with those goals and objectives. And so I just want to touch on these just as a brief overview. And so we've got, obviously, the preservation, that really first goal and objective. Anything that we need to do to address the repair and rehabilitation of existing roadways and bridges, so that work is pavement overlays, patching work, bridge maintenance work. Those types of projects will fit into this category. So when you see that investment, you'll see those feeding into that project type. In addition to that, we obviously have the capacity side. I mentioned expanding the systems. So anything that, any type of project where we're widening roadways, where we are building new interchains, interchanges, where we are expanding the system to relieve congestion, really feeds into the capacity framework of that project type. We've got operations and motor services. So anything that we need to do to have traffic signal upgrades, lighting work, drainage repairs, ITS, intelligent transportation systems, we're doing that within this category of work. And then we've got, obviously, the safety category, where we're looking at building new roundabouts, improving guardrails, doing intersection improvements. Those types of efforts will fall here. And then finally, we have a miscellaneous category. We've got a number of smaller repair efforts. We have the roadway transfer program, other things that feed into this. And so when we look at that investment at the back end of this presentation, you'll see these categories. One of the reasons why this is important is because we've got funding on the federal side with FHWA that falls into buckets. And so we've got to fit a lot of these projects into these or multiple categories to make sure we leverage those federal funds. And then finally, the phase of the project, the organization of it, is obviously critical today and really all the time, but want to focus on projects that are going to construction. Obviously, it's critical for all of our communities. So you see that first category, what projects are scheduled for letting? Which projects will be let for construction, eventually awarded a construction contract? That's that first category that obviously gets a lot of attention. So we'll go over that piece for this FY 2627 fiscal year. We've obviously got projects in development. What are we teeing up for next year so that we can get those projects and beyond ready for construction? So it may be in the planning stage, environmental or engineering design, anything in the pre-construction phase, getting it ready for construction, will fall in this category. And finally, we have projects waiting funding. Obviously, some of these are complex projects where we've got to pair federal dollars with state dollars. So we're finding that partnership, sometimes even pairing it with local dollars. And so you'll see projects that are in this category in some phase of the development, where we are trying to get additional funds to get to construction. And so with that, before we really review the investment, I just want to touch and review the project selection process real quick, just so that we understand, how do we get from really the legislative session each year to today? from really the legislative session each year to today and beyond till we're back in the session and then approving a highway priority program? And so with that, I'll jump right in. And so we're always starting again with these goals and objectives. And so those five goals and objectives we reviewed are actually broken down into eight items in Louisiana Revised Statute 48 to 29.1. And so you see those there. They all really are consistent with those five goals of objectives where we're preserving and operating the system, improving safety, expanding the system, and then improving the quality of life. And so with that, that is really the start of our program every year, as you can imagine, is making sure that we are aligning with those goals and objectives. And so from there, what are we doing? We are obviously trying to identify projects. And so we're starting with data, with really gathering and analyzing the data that we have across the department, roadway conditions, bridge conditions, operational data, safety obviously is critical. We have a lot of data on that. And then the congestion and traffic data that we've got. And then obviously going out to stakeholders, seeking input both from these types of meetings or from smaller meetings. We've got meetings with public, state, and local officials, MPOs, rural organizations, federal, obviously FHWA, getting their input as we really evaluate data and finding out how do we identify projects that will fit within this program? And then from there, we've got to obviously prioritize the projects and make sure that we can find available funding to get these to construction or start the engineering and design. And so working through this technical analysis with stakeholder input, understanding how it meets the objectives of our state's long range plan over a 10-year period and identifying how do we prioritize these in an effort to get these to construction? And so all of this is critical. And then finally, as we make these selections, we're considering these detailed factors. And so similar to what we touched on, whether it's conditions of roadways with structures and drainage, you've got emergencies and immediate need projects that have to be done with potential failures, looking at maintenance, you've got type and volume of traffic, population growth and economic development, obviously. And then of course, safety, crash records and other things. And then finally, looking at challenges both on the engineering as well as right-of-way side and then evacuation routes. And then taking all of this with projects that have been identified at some point and determining a really draft highway priority program. And so at the end of this, this process really looks like this, where coming back to the legislature and recommending projects that are assembled into a highway priority program. And so we provide this booklet each and every year on October 1st to the Joint Transportation Committee, where we're identifying those priorities for FY, the fiscal year, in this case, 2627. And then coming back to you today in that red box where we are having public meetings in each and every district so that we can communicate these priorities and future priorities to you and to the public and then really get that critical feedback. And then finally, proposing a draft final plan to the legislature in both the House and Senate committees, transportation committees next year. And so that is really in a summary and overview as well as that selection process from really beginning to end. And so obviously, there are great needs across our state. We understand that. We obviously are fixing the department and making sure that we are reforming the department. And so while we may not be able to meet every need today, we want to make sure to get your feedback to see can we do something this year or beyond to help meet those needs. And so wanted to touch on all of this before we jump right into the investment.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Any questions? The board's clear.
Okay. So with that, Mr. Chairman, you can see here on the screen, which you'll also see in this booklet, is the FY 2627 investment for next year. So this is a $1.2 billion investment in infrastructure and transportation infrastructure across our state. And so when you look at that, you know, really, what does that mean? We can look at that in a number of ways. I want to highlight the critical number there is $913 million is allocated for construction or more simply will be let for construction in this FY 2627. So again, we're making that commitment that we're delivering these projects each and every year, and that's part of this effort is to make sure we deliver that. Within that 913, 302 projects are going to be let for construction that are part of that number. So obviously a big number. And this is, this is separate from any LTIF dollars or other non-recurring cash that yet. So something like last year, you'd be getting closer to 1.5 billion if you incorporate that LTIF money that y'all provided to the department on all those projects. So it's a huge investment. With that, you know, 1.2 billion, you've got 220 million for preconstruction. That's important because we have to get projects ready for next year, making sure that we're getting all the engineering, design, environmental, and right-of-way done. You've got efforts to do the CE&I, the engineering inspection work, to make sure we're delivering the projects appropriately in construction. And so that is a lot of work and it's a big investment for this coming year. When you look at it in terms of project type, like I mentioned early, you've got kind of the biggest piece of that is preservation, always making sure that we're maintaining the system that we have. We've got 17,000 miles of roadway and 13,000 bridges, so a huge system to maintain. That green polygon in that pie chart is that preservation. That's 553 million. And then we've got operations, safety, and then the miscellaneous category, that's all part of this. And so it's a huge investment and a big effort in addition to all of the LTIF work we've got ongoing. So really exciting. With that, I want to share just a couple of the budget sub-partitions as we look at this, just to give you an idea of what's in these numbers. And so with that, I'm going to jump in. The first is that preservation side. And so you can see there on the screen, this is like I mentioned, the types of projects that this is including is both interstate and non-interstate preservation. You've got both what's on our federal highway system, the NHS, our state system, as well as non-federal aid type efforts. We've got that interstate pavement preservation, and we also have roadway preventative maintenance work that makes up all this. But another big component of it, obviously, we have a lot of bridges in our state, including this district. So you could see there, you've got roughly 200 million for on-system bridges and another 95.7 million for off-system. So another big investment in that preservation work. In addition to that, obviously, we have that operations, motor services category. So as I mentioned, you've got ITS and traffic control devices part of this, that the first two line items, we've got anything and everything from roadway flooding efforts, weigh stations, interstate lighting, rest areas, access management, ferries, major repairs, movable bridge maintenance, and ADA effort that are all part of this category. This is a pretty diverse category. You can see the various line items that are included there to make up that 100, roughly 101 million dollars. Of course, safety is obviously critical. We've got the highway safety program. We do projects across the state. This is obviously a lot of times paired with preservation work. So we're utilizing both of those categories to build a project. And so that helps us get these projects to construction. We also have the work that we do at railroad crossings to make them safer. You can see that there as well. And then finally, the miscellaneous category, a number of efforts in there, the TAP program, urban systems. You've got actually safe routes to schools and safe routes to public spaces that are actually part of this category, urban transit, et cetera. You've also got the federally mandated electrical vehicle category, NEVI, and then road transfer and other things that are all part of this that make up $1.2 billion investment this year. So ton of work going on both this year and this next fiscal year at the department. And this really highlights all of that good work. Finally, here in District 62, we have a lot of projects, actually 52 projects are slated to be let for construction. So it's actually a very large number. And so that's really good. You can see in the booklet that we provided, both the guidebook as well as the details here, we've got our District 62 book that shows the status of each and every project. When you go to walk in, you also have the map that shows geographically where all of these projects that are going to either be let this year, last year, or next year are located. And obviously, take this, part of this transformation is to make sure that we are continuing to improve our communication, both day-to-day as well as in events like this. So spending more time to continuously improve these public meetings and these handouts is what we're doing. We also have a one-pager that showcases the work across this HPP as well as District 62. And so with that, I will really close out, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for the time. Excited to give you this great news today and looking forward to answering any questions you may have.
Can you, can you touch on before you go about the bridge replacement program? I know we put a lot of money into that program last year.
Yes.
A lot of those bridges are in this district.
Yep.
Can you explain what's going on there and how?
Yeah, that's a great question, Mr. Chairman. One of the things probably should have mentioned is obviously, we also created a new Office of Louisiana Highway Construction to help support the department in non-federal aid efforts. And with that, they were allowed a emergency procurement authority for six months to get a lot of these things kickstarted that were in dire need. And so one of those is we were able to partner with them on the 62 bridges that are going to be replaced statewide. It's $100 million that you provided. And so they are leading that effort. We're collaborating with them, particularly on the federal aid routes. And so that is all moving forward. All of those projects are being designed and construction starting very soon on all of those efforts. And so that 62 projects, as you mentioned, a lot of those are in districts, DOTD District 62, and they're all moving very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? You always trying to jump? You looked at me.
Yes. I'm glad I made it to this session. I'd just like to ask next time whether I could be assigned to one. I represent two districts and I'm closer to the river parishes. So I definitely would like to be scheduled where I could make both meetings, but that they would be with the river parishes section in Jefferson or wherever it's hell in New Orleans. But in addition to that, this is an opportunity for me because I have been a part of the legislature for about not quite two years yet. In my first term, I've asked for resolutions for traffic controls in my area. And I have a lot of pedestrians on Highway 61. I have nursing home. I have schools, several schools at the intersection, St. Charles Catholic, St. John of Arc, a nursing home, Twin Oaks Nursing Home, Placedaburg Senior Citizen Center, where these people are trying to ameliorate and cross from one side of Highway 61 to the other. And I passed a resolution and my brothers and sisters here, they helped me to pass this resolution saying we need it. I had the district attorney's office to tell me that it is a very high crash area. I have the sheriff's office that's aboard that told me that this, these intersections, in the last three months, there were two people that were killed trying to cross at these intersections. I want to know what's the momentum? When am I going to get some action from the department since my resolution's passed in the House? When are we going to get some action in St. John Parish to have this done? I'm also concerned that I'm planning on doing resolution for St. Charles Parish also because they are on Highway 90 and they're trying to cross safely. But I do know about the crash reports in St. John, and I know that my public officials are behind me, but I want some momentum to this. In addition to that, I have the veterans. I've been trying to get the veterans. One of the issues with the veterans has nothing to do with, per se, with transportation, but I'm trying to get one of the streets, and it's been approved, that it's designated as Veterans Memorial to honor these war heroes that have fought for our country. And that has not happened yet, but it was passed. It was, the resolution was passed in the House. So I definitely need your assistance to tell me why is it not moving forward as expeditiously? The last thing in my areas are the railroad crossings. We, and I do see some improvement because some of the streets that I asked about, they have addressed those streets. But I do have, one of them is Martin Luther King. They haven't done the total assessment on that street yet. So I'm just using this podium today to try to get some movement on the things in my area because I do think that it's necessary and I think it's achievable. I have one other thing with reference to the Port Commission. I've asked for a study with reference to making West 10th Street in Reserve interchangeable with Highway 6, the interstate I-10. Because this port of South Louisiana is the second largest port in the world. So why can't we have a study on it? So I'm asking my sisters and brothers on the podium, and I'm asking you, transportation officials, to try to make this a priority for me so that they can assist me and we can get this done because we are moving forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Taylor.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, we will certainly get with you on all those items and follow up and do that as quickly as possible. Thank you.
And I'm glad you're here, Rep. Taylor. Let's talk about this tomorrow. You're going to be in Baton Rouge? We had another meeting in Baton Rouge, but we'll talk about it. This is District 62. So we want to talk about that first also. Okay? Anybody else?
Okay.
Rep. Walden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to say first off, thank you, Jacques Berry. Last year, I went out of town to do this meeting and I requested we have it in Livingston, and apparently we had enough seats. I wanted to thank everybody for coming out to Livingston Parish this year and highlighting us a little bit. Beyond that, I want to say thanks to Dalton and Derek. Dalton, Derek, I wear y'all out. Derek, I'm bringing you in this only because three, four times a week, I call you about a specific project on Juban Road and we have conversations and it gets moved along. So I just wanted to, to DOTD, I want to say thank you for the momentum you have. I mean, I could sit up here and constructively criticize a million things. On the other side of that though, I do, I say thank you for some momentum, I guess, because I know in the last few weeks and months, we've had some push in the Juban Road project. So that's very, very, I mean, dead center in the map you gave me for my specific district, but it affects all of us. So I want to say thanks for putting that on a top priority list. And again, I'm thanking Dalton and Derek publicly because I wear them out and they never hang up. They always answer and they're very, I mean, even if the answer is something I don't want, I get it. Beyond that though, I'd be bridge bundling efficiencies. We can't legislate common sense. And I think one of the frustrations for me has been watching DOTD do things that any of us in a private world would fail at and be fired and be unemployed. You guys have come in, and I know in the last few months, you've made some transformative changes. So I think, you know, using the Juban Road analogy and with what you've learned, especially with possibly Juban Road, you know, the bridge bundling, that's common sense. I buy pallets of product from our company at one time. So I commend you. What do we, very, very tough question, but what do we expect DOTD moving forward? Because we all know that the nightmare it's been in the past. I want to give you a minute to highlight the positives because you have to be seeing gains in efficiency, gains in deliverables to the citizen. Is that fair?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot there. I guess I would start on the environmental side. Obviously, we have the benefit of, the administration is looking to remove red tape. Obviously, if you look at projects like I-10, Calcasieu River Bridge, it took 25 years to get the environmental impact statement done. Where, you know, the thought is that through these improvements, it will not take two and a half decades. And so that's a help to, you know, I think everyone at our department, I'll tell you, wants to make sure that we build, you know, good infrastructure for the state. And so we all have the same intention, the same alignment. Obviously, looking at improving the bureaucracy is something that I think we all want to do. And so that's been welcomed and we've had a lot of good partnerships there at DOTD as well as with y'all to get that done. So thank you. I think, you know, just getting small things like the LTIF O&amp;M dollars, that's allowed us to be able to, you know, it's hard to be efficient with almost no money, right? And so when we get that, it's allowed us to be efficient, to basically improve that trust, to make sure that we're delivering so y'all trust in us each and every year. But again, like innovation, I mean, whether it's AI or really asset management or anything that, some technologies that weren't available 10 years ago are available now to help us improve the efficiencies at the department with little to no additional staff is really beneficial. And I think everybody at DOTD is looking forward to making these changes and hopefully y'all are seeing them here on the ground.
Well, thank you. And again, a very vague question. I didn't expect the answer to be narrow, but I think, give it some time. Maybe next year we'll push a little bit more. But I for one, want to say thanks because I've spoken to you directly, you know, and the people in your office. It's been, it's been nice to see the turn towards common sense and stuff that will give good, true deliverables to our taxpayer. Thank you.
Gloria, so?
On Highway 11 between Salmon and Old Spanish Trail, there were two areas we were trying to get crosswalks for students to get to school. My understanding was that the DOTD needed the city of Sidell to apply for a grant through some federal program for that. Can you tell me if that's been done or what do I, what do I need to do to make sure that gets facilitated for this year?
Yeah, good question, Representative Gloria. So Dalton, you mind coming up here and giving a little background?
So Rep., I've been asked about that question several times. And again, yes, you're correct. The sidewalks need to be put in place there for us to be able to build the crosswalks to that, to those facilities. One of those in particular, I spoke with then mayor about adding, under one of our projects and upgrading one of our flash and yellow projects to include that on that. So I have that in the works. I have an upcoming meeting with the new mayor and we're going to continue, trying to keep continuing that process. But we do need agreements in place.
Please let me know when that meeting is so we can, we have a lot of new people, obviously, in Sidell. So I like to be able to stay on top of it, make sure we get whatever the city needs to be done on their side, but you can do your side, make sure that gets done.
And I do have that on my list to speak with the new mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. First of all, I want to say thank you to Secretary Lade for being here and for our chairman and welcome to everybody to Livingston Parish. We appreciate you guys being here for this meeting. We appreciate you guys being here for this meeting. Appreciate Representative Roger Wilder for inviting you to make this possible. One of the things I want to remind everybody about is, I don't know if you saw the article recently, the Advocate reported that Livingston Parish is the fastest growing parish in the state. Y'all saw that? Eight percent, over eight percent growth, eight and a half percent growth, where a lot of other places in our state are declining. They're having decline in growth. And so there's, I've got a list, I'm going to hand it out, the Cook Road Extension, Demco Road, those projects have been in the works, but we really need to get those funded because what we're doing is looking at critical businesses that want to come here with the promise that we've made to get this, these projects complete. Really important things, which is going to produce even more income for the state to do more road projects. But they don't want to sign that on the dotted line until they know these projects are really going to be finished. So I just want to, you know, because of our growth that we have in Livingston Parish, we're excited about that and just encourage you guys to take that into consideration when you're looking at all the projects across the state. And want to just say thank you again for your hard work and welcome to Livingston Parish.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. Anyone else? Senator Moiseau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things, and this may be Dalton, but before we bother him, I just want you to know he'll answer my text. He is incredibly responsive to every, every little annoyance that I could come up with. So I, yeah, I could come up with a lot. No, but I really, I do appreciate you. Oh, he's counting. But the project you showed, the picture of the Highway 190, the Clayburn Hill Overpass, what's the, what's the end on that ever going to be? Because I mean, it's beautiful. It looks so ready to be used fully. So tell me the roundabouts, I know. What, what are you seeing with that?
So the current phase on that, Senator, is the project you see ongoing, which is getting pretty close. It should be within just days of opening that bridge to full four lane traffic, which is going to be glorious, right?
Right.
Travel through there on a regular basis. You know, past that, we've got multiple other stages in that, in that project phase. There's a phase two that's going to be broken into half, but basically the goal eventually is to make it all the way to that intersection with 25 and 190 there.
How many roundabouts? Three or two?
Two more on 190.
What?
Four or five. They're saying five.
Five? Oh, my people are going to lose their minds.
I know. I know there's going to be one with 25 and 190. And then there's a couple smaller ones in there. But those plans have not been developed. That's just the phasing. We've finished with the project we're on that's been developed and designed and we'll move into the design stage on the next.
So you won't have the inconvenience of the construction as we have been seeing. It's going to be a much lesser, when you're doing the roundabouts, it's going to be much lesser of a, involved in, yeah.
I mean, you know, this has been very involved with that, with that bridge, having to get the traffic onto that new bridge. Those are very heavy in traffic there, but the next phase will go much easier and quicker.
And one more thing, in Vogalosa Highway 60, there's a bridge.
Yes, ma'am.
That's been a real source of annoyance. I mean, the concern is the roads people are using to bypass that, that bridge that's been put out, it's tearing up all the road. So is there any way to, now that I've got you in this room with all these people, could we bring the date up a little bit? Because the trucks can't get through that area of town.
I've got commitments. I've been working with, I mean, it's very unfortunate that that bridge had to be closed. Very unfortunate, right?
Right, right.
Before we could get that bled, it was scheduled for letting, if I'm not mistaken, in May. Right now, I can almost promise you it's going to be two months faster than that and I'm working. We're almost finished with the Rottaway acquisition. And we've got, we do need some help from the city of Vogalosa, you know, with moving a water line. And that's kind of maybe our hinge point right now, right now is getting that water line.
So you're waiting for that?
We're waiting for an agreement from the city to be able, to be able to move forward with them. So I'll talk with you later about that.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
But right now, that's the only hinge point on that project.
Okay, thanks. Anything like that, please let me know. Okay.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Moiseau. Rep Dickerson?
Thank you so much, Senator, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. And also part of the Livingston delegation, want to welcome everyone to Livingston Parish. And Secretary Lade, thank you for all you're doing to revamp DOTD. We appreciate and we're seeing all the changes and the needed changes. Your staff is incredible. I was telling Assistant Secretary how much we appreciate, Eric, the needed changes. My assistant and I were riding over here and we were stopped on 1019. And the folks that are working out in the cold, you know, they, they pulled us over and they were telling us, you know, the progress that was going on, on that road. And they, the morale was incredible. And we were telling them where we were going and Mary can tell you, it's a night and day change. And we know it's the pains of progress, but I wanted to personally thank you in this meeting and appreciate because it's so much more organized. And I know it's baby steps like anything else, but we appreciate you putting your heart and your soul into something that's so far behind and it's so much that has to be done. Dalton Williams is incredible. He takes the phone calls and he takes the headaches that we give him all the time, as well as Derek Burner. And they go above and beyond, especially dealing with me because I know I'm a nightmare to deal with a lot of times. But it's the people we serve because they deserve so much. And Livingston Parish, as Senator Hodges mentioned, we're so fast growing and we've got so many issues here for our people. So thank you for trying. Thank you for all you're doing. We've got these roundabouts that are needed. We've got all these issues, but thank y'all for making it a priority because it's the people that we took that oath to serve that deserve this. So anything we can do to put things on the fast track and anything we can do to make a difference, you know, we get the phone calls day and night. Dalton and Derek, as y'all know, Chad gets them too, Bacchus with Fort Toblata. You know Chad as well as I do. Anything we can do to help get those dollars and implement things in the right direction, thank y'all for putting your heart and soul and your expertise and also to make a difference, to increase morale and letting your people know that it's boots on the ground and that they're making a difference. It goes a long way. So thank y'all, we appreciate it, Secretary.
Thank you, Representative Dickerson.
Thank you, Representative Dickerson. Representative Coats?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank y'all for hosting this. It's always great to come here this, during the year and see where we're going. And I think there's been a lot of progress. So I think I have a couple of questions for Dalton too, but, but I also want to let you know, I agree with all of them that he answers the call, the texts. If we need a meeting, he is, he is always there for us. Clay in his office, you know, I think I wear him out also, but he's always on top of it. But we spoke about safety, the reflectors. I know, you know, Louisiana's not used to snow and we had those snow plows come through and removed a lot of reflectors and I-55 was one of the ones that I got. Because we have a lot that commute to one south during, you know, night shift and shift work. So just want to kind of go on the record to make sure we're moving.
We are moving forward with those, those projects. And I'd have to go look at that one specifically because we let multiple projects to replace those. They're, they're either all let, waiting on the contractor to come, which I'm pretty sure that one is. I'll get with you and just confirm, but we've got one or two left, the let will let in the next month and then all those will be replaced pretty soon.
Okay, great. The 51, I get burned with this one all out. So is that one going to be, because it's red on my map, so that's going to be let?
I got it moved up to January letting.
Yes, thank you so much.
Just for you.
Yeah.
I would say that is one of those projects that the LTIF money, we did get it funded through the LTIF funding and we were able to move that forward. Mr. Ben Tassin, our design engineer, has worked diligently about a month ago, finished that set of plans and I did get it moved up to the next January letting.
Awesome, thank you. And then one other thing I want to also agree with Senator Hodges that, you know, this North Shore is growing. Like, you know, we're one of the biggest parts of the state that's growing. And I have mentioned in multiple meetings and even some of our North Shore freshman class meetings about I-12 and I-55. Like that corridor is not only just transportation for all of us and all of our districts, but it is a commerce route for the whole Gulf Coast. And we need to, as a state, start putting emphasis on doing upgrades. I mean, Tangbow Parish, we're a choke point. You know, St. Tammany's three-laning and growing parts of Livingston has expanded, but then we all choked down and then we have I-55 in the middle of it. And I don't know how many of all of you and if you, y'all need to start looking at how many 18-wheelers flip over on I-55, that cloverleaf, on a weekly basis. I know I saw something in the documents about it's a project in development and stuff, but we really need to, I know the Calcasieu Bridge is a big one, but I even spoke to the speaker about, look, the, the major projects and stuff, I-12 needs to be the next one. Like we really need some improvements here. Because not only for our growth and expansion in our businesses, but for the whole Gulf Coast and to continue to grow Louisiana, so.
Yep, I agree. Thank you for those comments. I think the first thing is, you know, obviously we recognize the growth here. So for that reason, we are prioritizing the first corridor plan to really understand those project needs and develop those. And so that will be the I-12 corridor. And so that is something critical the governor and I have spoken about, making sure that we prioritize that and getting those projects ready so that we can move from concept to construction. One of those is the I-10, I mean, I-12, I-55 interchange that we're working on, Dalton.
So, so what I would say to you, as you, as you mentioned, I-55, I-12 intersection, I'm, I'm looking at a route from Washington Parish and St. Tammany Parish and the surrounding parishes, it's not even in their area and they, they, they're not in their head because they drive through that intersection as I do in my family on a regular basis. And I would agree with, that corridor is something we really need to focus on the next.
Even Secretary Boujou, she lives in St. Tammany and she even mentioned, you know, because I brought it up, it's also an LED, you know, like if we're going to develop and start growing, we have to keep up with our roads and our infrastructure. And this, like I said, we kind of got a choke point and we need to start looking. But I also want to go on record that the bridge that goes over the Tangbow River, you know, before I-12, you know, we had the flood of 83 and we want to make sure we have enough capacity. So when those are developed and those plans that we make sure that specifically for the river, that we have enough capacity to go under and not, you know, choke it off or north of, north of I-12. So thank y'all, thank y'all again, and I appreciate.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
No, District 57, thank you.
Thank you.
Basically, I thought of another question. Is there any likely, well, who's the person that I should be contacting at your department for District 57?
Well, we'll start, I think, our legislative liaisons, we'll talk to you, Greg Cromer and Jacques Berry, and we'll go through that list of items and make sure we address all of those. So after this, they'll get right with you and then we'll start addressing those.
So then I'll be on a first name basis like some of the other people with those individuals. Okay, in addition to that, is there any likelihood that anytime in the future that we can get a bridge in St. John Parish or the ferry back in service? And I'll tell you why, I'm an attorney. And I went into court one day and there was a gentleman who finished all of his programs and he was, they, they gave him a certificate. And the gentleman was trying to walk. Anywhere you go, he lived in La Plaz, he had to walk back either 11 or 12 miles down the highway to the bridges at the edge of St. John and St. James Parish, or either go to St. Charles Parish to get back. And he was walking, trying to get back. There's no transportation. They discontinued the ferry and, you know, we have no bridge in that area. So anywhere the cut goes, you have 20 some miles, if you don't have transportation, to go to court. But he had done it, but that particular day he was walking. So I'd like to know, I know it's not going to be overnight that this happens, but I wanted to bring to your attention also.
Okay, yeah, certainly do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rep Taylor. I see no other questions? I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate y'all.
For your presentation. All right, now we're going to move into the public comments section of the meeting. Anyone who's filled out this statement card, anybody who wants to speak, please fill out this card or this sheet and come on up. I'm going to call Robbie Miller, Tangbow Ho Parish President. I also want to note in the audiences, Kathy Stewart, who works with Senator Phil Cassidy's office, is in the audience.
Thank you very much for having us.
Good afternoon.
Chairman, for you distinguished ladies and gentlemen that are not from the area, welcome to the North Shore, the five parishes of the state. Three of them have been mentioned already. Livingston, Tangbow Ho and St. Tammany are the three, only three parishes in the state that have grown in the last census. And all three of us are growing at very aggressive rates into eight, nine, 10%. It's already been mentioned, I'm going to be kind of a parrot. I-12 is dramatic, that, all of the projects are on the list already, we agree with and we love it. I agree too that Dalton's done a phenomenal job. Glenn's done a phenomenal job. We want to make sure we get all that out, okay? But, but on the single thing, and there's a whole bunch of things else I could talk about, this is my 10th year to say the same thing at this, at this meeting. I-12 is a choke point. We're the fastest growing and the only growing parishes in the state. It's entered, it's international commerce that comes through our, our parishes. It's great to see the I-12, I-55 exchange being taken care of and of course, the widening of I-12 throughout those parishes. Ms. Coats mentioned it, and this is the big part that I hit on every year, is that when we do expand I-12 through Tangbow Parish, there was this little lawsuit and this little flood in 1983 that flooded thousands of people and it was proven in court. And you guys, maybe not you as legislators, but the legislature just approved last session, the payout of the settlement to the flood victims of 1983. So it is imperative that when we rebuild I-12, that we figure out how to get more water under I-12 from the north to the south so that we don't just create a bigger dam and cause more flooding that's already proven to have taken place because of the, the way the interstate was designed. With that being said, I thank you very much for the work that you do. I've got to get to a finance committee meeting and a council meeting in Tangbow Parish in just a few minutes. God bless you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, next up is Councilman Dean Coats. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir. I want to thank everyone for being here.
Station A for the record, please.
I'm sorry.
Station A for the record.
Okay, I apologize. Dean Coats, District 8 Councilman for Livingston Parish. Thanks everyone for coming out here. Thanks for the, allowing us to host the meeting tonight, or this evening, rather. And I just want to say DOTD has made a lot of improvements and significantly in my area as well. With that being said, there are some areas, and I'm not here to do anything other than be informative and just make sure that everyone's aware of these areas. I know I spoke with my own representative, which is Mr. Wile, Representative Wiley, and I've made him aware of these as well, but since we did have a meeting out here today, I want to come and just make sure that they are acknowledged. And that's going to be LA 44 at LA 63. We've had a lot of fatal, at least two or three fatal crashes in the past year there. have a meeting out here today, I want to come and just make sure that they are acknowledged. And that's going to be LA 44 and LA 63. We've had a lot of fatal, at least two or three fatal crashes in the past year there. It's a rural area. I think a roundabout would be sufficient in that area if, you know, funds could be found for that at some point in the future. Additionally, 444 at LA 16. We have a lot of people that work in the refineries in our parish, and even beyond our parish, and they all come through Highway 22 and Highway 16 to get back from Ascension Parish and Livingston Parish and vice versa, depending on which way they're heading to work. So, especially on the, well, in both of those areas, they're choke points. They back up for miles when everyone's getting out of the refineries, trying to get home. It also affects a lot of people in the local community down there in District 8 around the Virgin Canal, Head of Island. And I just think it would help expedite that traffic through there. Like I say, I'm not, all I'm trying to do is give you information on the situation. LA 42 and LA 63, y'all, if you head down 63, you'll get to 42. The road's not real level there. There's a bad spot right there. Maybe that could be looked at as well. I'm afraid that might be a safety concern. There's another area, and I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm just trying to be informative. But Highway 42 at South Satsuma Road, when the road was put in, South Satsuma Road was originally there, then Highway 42 was put in. When it was put in, it was put in on a great, big embankment. That embankment, whenever there's a crash on the interstate on I-12, they, a lot of times will shuffle people down South Satsuma Road. When that occurs, 18-wheelers get to the end of South Satsuma, and they can't clear the road embankment as it comes up, because they're coming from a lower level to a higher level, and they get bottomed out right there. So that is a really big problem, and I know that's part, probably
Thank you, Councilman Coats. And, you know, communication is the key. Once these things are, you make us aware of that, you know, the district can jump on it, and Rep Wilder was taking notes up here.
Yes. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is St. Tammany Parish President Mike Cooper.
Thank you, everyone. It's great to be here this afternoon. I think I echo Parish President Robbie Miller's sentiments and some of the representatives sitting up here today. St. Tammany Parish is the fourth largest parish in the state of Louisiana, and one of the three fastest-growing parishes along, in the state. Again, along the I-12 corridor, which is a tremendous asset to the three parishes in southeast Louisiana. We have the same, the same concerns and the same ask for improvements along I-12. We ask for your continued support of our state highways in St. Tammany Parish. We have a, and, and we have a large amount of state highways in St. Tammany Parish, along with our parish roads. And we ask for continued improvements on 1077, 59, 1088, 59, I can name them all. Let's, the Collins Boulevard Overpass, which you saw graphics on the first phase, yeah, 21, 22. Collins Boulevard Overpass is about to open, but that's, there's three more phases that'll bring it up to Ronald Reagan Highway in 25, that we can continue to show progress towards Washington Parish. The 3241 project in its third phase, that's going to open up the center of St. Tammany Parish and alleviate traffic on Highway 21 in, in the west and Highway 41 in the east. Two, two major projects that we'd like to see continued. Thanks for the Mill and Overlay projects, the safety projects, the traffic studies, and other new capacity projects that can be sent our way. I was at a meeting the other night with Representative Jim Carver, and, you know, he stated so eloquently that we send a lot of money to Baton Rouge, and we want, we'd like to get some of that money back to St. Tammany Parish. And we do. Our population is over 275,000, again, the fourth largest parish in the state of Louisiana. We thank you for your work, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention two projects. Representative Glorio knows these two very well, and he's been working, as well as other reps and state senators in, in this area. The US 11 Norfolk Southern Railroad Overpass, just north of the city of Slidell, right below I-12, is in dire need of repair. It's a dangerous roadway. It's a US Highway 11. It's a federal highway. Indeed, it needs more than just some safety improvements, which are underway. But this, this particular bridge needs replacement. And there are, there are five bridges, the US 90 Pearl River Bridges between Slidell or the, the old White Kitchen area that leads to Pearlington and the Gulf Coast. There are five bridges that cross the Pearl, the East Pearl, the East Middle Pearl, Middle Middle Pearl, the West Pearl, and the West Middle Pearl. I didn't make that up. That's, those are the names. But these are old bridges too, that were built back in the 30s, 40s, 50s. And again, one, one bridge is out at this time, so that, that corridor is completely closed at this time. Upwards of 250 million to 300 million or more is needed to replace those bridges. We know that that, a, a local parish or the state cannot do that, but jointly, we need to work on replacing those bridges. And I know we have great support from our, our local delegation, our North Shore delegation, and hopefully this, this serves, serves the state as well. So with that, as I always do, I'll follow up with a, with a memo to this committee. Thank you for hearing us. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all the cards we have up here. So, Mr. Secretary, you want to close? And before you close, I just want to thank DOTD, thank you, your staff, and my colleagues up here. We have limited funds and many, many needs. And I want to thank Livingston Parish for allowing us to use these facilities. So, thank you.
Yep, I'll echo those. You know, thanks Livingston Parish. Again, thank you. I think you heard it today, Dalton and his team work really hard. And so we're obviously partnered together in full alignment to do what we need to do to transform the department and build infrastructure across the state. So thanks for your time and looking forward to the session next year. Appreciate it.
And ladies and gentlemen, the road show is going to move from Livingston Parish to Baton Rouge tomorrow at 10:00 AM at the Capitol. With that, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.